So everything's gonna come back in, which is gonna make his driveway.
So you're saying about six inches over here.
Pretty steep.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna make, actually it'll make the water flow worse once it gets there.
So all the flat water will flow into the driveway.
Instead of down the driveway.
Only thing, only water left that you are dealing with would be on his driveway. So, all the flat water up there is gonna go into the driveway.
Well, all the flat water within the driveway.
Yeah, right.
Okay, the driveway, okay. So you're saying that about six inches of soil here over what it is now. So this goes from here to here. So you're saying raise this about six inches and taper it down and taper it down here. So it'll be an uneven thing.
Right.
Okay, let me go look at that.
That's the way we put them out before. We've put a lot of those in and they answered a lot of problems.
Oh, I know that, I understand that. And actually, I think we got them here, and they work up to a point. Okay. It may be that we just shut it over to the swell with everything else. No, that's not that, that's terrible, but what's gonna happen, you have to tear up the driveway. Okay, a little close on this too, that's fine. Do some more work on it. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go to the next thing. This is important. We got nailed on last year, didn't do anything about it. We're just not, I know priority. And now, got nailed on again this year by the auditor. And this is a little bit, uh... There's some errors in here. I just took the old ordinance and patched in, and I didn't change this. Uh, this is the, uh, the section we talked about, the purchase orders. And, uh, the, I took a look at it, and I took it only at 304, I thought we had to change that, but we didn't. So this is just section 308. Uh, we'd never use purchase orders. And, uh, we track finances by fund, not department. Uh, we, we pre-approved costs, and we know we work within the budget. And then again, the council approves it before we pay. So from that standpoint, uh, this, this is something that needs to be changed. Uh, adding a PO number on every purchase order of any consequence. Uh, and there's a lot of them that are, you know, thirty, fifty, and there is just a lot of work. So, and we don't have departments, actually. We have funds. We have basically, we have water, and we have everything else, even though we call them different funds. So this is the change to it. I'm just gonna write it up, this is just showing you. I'll set it up for first reading, uh, next, possibly. And I'll correct all the errors in here. So any comments or questions on this? You had a chance to read it?
No comments.
Okay. Comments, comments? All right. Next thing is, this is Lee's quote. Discussion here is manning for the water system. Want you to take up on that.
Well, John, or the mayor and I talked about, uh, a third person on the, on the water department. We barely need a third person, and but start, at that time, startup was gonna need a half, half person. And so we were gonna take advantage of that and get it in, hire a person to serve us twenty hours and them twenty hours. But we can't do that now because they're gonna use salt. And, but we still need a third person. Uh, so I've, uh, talked about going ahead and, and trying to hire a temporary one for twenty hours, twenty hours a week. John is doing mowing lawns and, and doing manual labor that, uh, that he shouldn't be sitting in the office, uh, writing grants. Richard is, doesn't have time to, to do his complete water department work along with, uh, the other things that he needs to do. So, and we need a, we need a third person, we just need a, need somebody that could go along and, we need water meters installed. We need the, the water boxes all cleaned out so he can read the water meters. All this stuff takes time. We need all the fire hydrants painted, cleaned out around them. I mean, there's plenty of work for a third person for twenty hours a week. So, if we can possibly afford it to come out of the water department funds, I, I would recommend that we hire a person for twenty hours a week. On a temporary basis. Until we get our comp thing back, and, and then we're gonna have to know more about what we are gonna have to do to build a reserve at the water department, which is gonna be considerable. But, but for now, I'd like to see us hire somebody for twenty hours a week to, uh, to help the people that we have. Uh, the mayor mentioned that if we, if we do that, we could change some of the payroll that Richard is on, the general payroll, and maybe we-
We don't have the money in the general fund to, uh, move Richard to it.
No, we're gonna move him off of. He's getting twenty percent off, or twenty percent of his pay off of the general payroll.
Right, mhm.
Yeah. So, but maybe we could move Richard off of that, and if, and then we'd take some volunteer help. You mentioned that it would take somebody to volunteer to empty the trash at the park on the Fridays. I told him, when I'm in town, I would be glad to do that. So, uh, between myself doing some of the volunteer work and somebody else doing something else, uh, I think the city would be better off by having this third person. Uh, for only twenty hours. It'd be, I mean, it'd be twenty hours, and, uh, John, of course, could have him doing whatever's the most important thing for him to do.
But if he's paid out of the water department, he's twenty hours of the water department. It's gonna be water work and-
It's gonna come out of the water department.
So we would increase the, the water system.
Right, and the other thing he mentioned, which is, uh, is still puzzling, and he is talking about pulling Richard off. And you're not, if, if you're having Richard do other things, you're not taking that out of the water money either.
God, let me see, what have we got?
Twenty percent of Richard's- You can only pay, you can only pay an employee out of the water fund for work they do in the water.
Yes. That is absolutely correct.
Yeah. That's what I understand. Richard's, twenty percent of Richard's pay is coming out of the general fund, eighty percent is coming out of the water.
So you can't rotate his work and then still balance it that way, that's the question.
Right, right.
Let's see, okay. My salary, my salary, excuse me. Let's see what we did here. Just brought that up. Pull this one here. What we started, uh... Get this one a little bigger. Yeah, there it is. Okay, so Richard... Water, I have to, okay, that's Richard. Uh, zero percent, zero percent monash, all unfortunate, and all control.
Five percent parks.
Yeah, five percent parks. That's, uh, that's what, hundred hours a year? Am I not moving, yeah, come on. Okay. Parks is five percent. Building is, you know, inspections and stuff is five percent. Streets is five percent. And storm drains is five percent, and then water is eighty. So we're talking like a hundred hours a year for these other things that somebody should be spending. And, uh, he mowed US two park one time on the week, uh, and we're just, uh, watching that. And the thing about streets, uh, we're assuming that we'll end up doing that on stuff line. So, or some park report, 'cause that's about what they-
Art storm drains, water.
Storm drain has its own monash.
It's a separate deal. It's actually, uh, getting rid of storm water, not, not creating water. So, uh, anyways, that's the way it spreads out. And if you add someone else in water, you're getting more done in water, like you say. The meters get changed faster, the hydrants get cleaned and painted faster. So that's, uh, that's a possibility. Now, we don't have it in the budget, we don't have it, uh, planned or anything else, uh, and we can't take a lump of what we get. We tried talking to BUD about doing something similar with the I L A non-call people. And their stuff is, uh, you know, either they send this whole team of trucks-
Yeah.
-flaggers and everything, or they don't send anybody.
Right.
So, uh, if there was some sort of super major thing that would work, but we haven't implemented that because it didn't really solve any of the problems that we have.
Well, the thing is, right now, we've got, we've got Richard and John and Denise.
Yeah.
And if, if, uh, if John gets sick, and just this last week, Richard had to go to a, some kind of a school.
Yep, we had nobody, yep.
We, uh, we're in a bad situation here. If, uh, both of them get sick at once, or somebody in their family gets sick, and they gotta leave town, but, uh... If we possibly can, now, I may, we, maybe we can't possibly do it. I'm just saying that we could possibly do it and take it out of the water fund.
Well, we'll have to examine it. I mean, you know, you just, uh, have to see, so we're saying, you know, the archers are there, you gotta do it all out of, out of, uh... And John's got like sixty percent of his type of water, so, uh... Okay. Uh, how do you want to proceed on this? I'm not sure what it would take to get a part-time person. We, we went through the temp agency for Charles White, and that worked out well. And I don't know what we were paying, uh, the agency to get someone of his caliber.
Well, I need, uh, I'd like to have the, uh, the rest of the council's opinion on this. If they wanna proceed on it, then we can do whatever, uh, you feel is best to do, 'cause, uh, you know more about that than, than the rest of us. So, the council, you agree?
So, my opinion is that I, I will take the advice of John White with regard to what his need is within the water department. I'm fully willing to support employing another person growing funds from the water department, having them work in the water department if the need is there. If you're looking for another individual to do all kinds of other work, we're not using the water fund money for that. That's where I'm at.
Well, we can't use the water for that.
If he needs, if he needs help in the water department, and we have the funds, then we should proceed.
You're on. I need help in the water department. Department of Health, there's a lot new regulations coming down, they're called stage two. There's gonna be a lot more testing, which is a lot more time consuming for Richard. One of the problems we have now is, you know, you have valve boxes for hydrants, you have valve boxes to turn certain sections of town on and on. And they get silted up, you get a main break, even if you can find the valve, you can't get the wrench on it. You know, we can keep somebody busy, we can keep somebody busy working on hydrants and just cleaning valve can boxes out. In the past, we implemented and we tried to continue with, but because of shortages of people, uh, repair some of the hydrants. We repaired quite a few hydrants, but we have quite a few hydrants that need repairing because they're hard to open, they're hard to close, uh, they leak, and that sort of stuff. There, there's just so much we can do. If, if we have an emergency, right now Denise, she's out of City Hall. We have to shut City Hall down. And especially at night, with two or three people on a main break or something, you're way short-staffed. If we have somebody that's part-time, we can call them in. They can hold a flag, they can be helped setting up the site. And if nothing else, they can, they can keep the citizens, and, and I, it, it's great that citizens wanna help. But one of our big problems, a lot of people in town see we're short, short-staffed, they'll grab a shovel, they'll be whatever, they'll jump in a hole. What's gonna happen if they get hurt, right?
John, is, is Sherry a possibility for, for helping with some of this?
Pardon?
Is Sherry a possibility for helping in, in the water?
I would think that. If we're hiring somebody to do the water work, we wanna find somebody who's specialized.
I, uh, I can answer that. Sherry just got her alumni notice back, and she is qualified only for, uh, some very light duty work. I have to interrupt you to get to the air. I had just received a call that I have a family emergency, so I'm gonna have to excuse myself and leave. Okay.
I, I'd like, if I may say-
Your short answer was yes.
I'd like the council just to continue until next week, so the whole council can be here on the discussion.
Well, I think the discussion is pretty much over. If your opinion said yes, couldn't wait enough to say it. Uh, but, go ahead and work on the budget for that, we'll see you later.
Thank you.
Yep, start making it and start looking at the temp agency to, uh, to find someone. That's how we got, uh, Charles White last time.
You would need, uh, you'd need authority to do that, 'cause you could-
Uh, we'll get the authority next time. And we gotta, you know-
Get the budget, budget adjusted.
We have to make the budget adjusted.
Yeah.
So, so, you know.
So now, so, anyway.
I gave you all the budget stuff last time, so you can go, you'll all say agreed.
Okay, I can handle that next week.
Okay. Two weeks.
Thank you.
Sure enough, thank you, you did the work.
Yeah.
Always appreciate people who do the work. Okay. The status of the F one, oh, there it is, the fifth repair. Uh, last time we talked about the quotes we'd got, and we were going to go out and, uh, this, uh, take a look at, get an alternate quote. Uh, one thing that came out, let me turn it down here. Uh, I had asked Waggly to do a complete, uh, analysis of the F-150 because it hadn't had any serious work done since like two thousand and five or seven or something. And so they did that, but a lot of time in it, and they do this on the expectation of getting an order. Uh, the, and there, there were several things in there, on, on there. The, uh, some things were really immediate. I thought the brush was gonna be rectifying. Uh, the, there's a check engine light with something wrong with it, and then there was the front end work. Now, right now, the front end is in the status, uh, we got new tires, uh, but it's, we started getting a shim in about fifty-five. So it's not, it's not an emergency, but it's something we need to do. And I had sort of had the ambition of having all the maintenance work done by the end of this calendar year, so that we'd be know, oh, by the way, we got it next year. Uh, and, and we still got the money to spend out of the, the special, uh, dispensation of the fund. So, anyway, but they ended up, uh, you know, and if, uh, you could get a second quote, they said, well, which, you know, the complication bill, one of which is take our estimate blockout prices and have Avery quote that. If so, they want two hundred and ten dollars and six and nine cents for that because they developed a specification issue, just like the auditor says, oh, you can build something, you gotta hire an engineer to do all the estimates, and then you contract out. Well, or get bids out. Uh, so they sort of performed that role inadvertently. I went ahead and released the door repair. Uh, I considered it a safety issue. It was approved a year ago, and the owner of John ever sent to get it fixed. Uh, the way you had to get in the truck, you had to get in from the passenger side door, scoot over, hop over the first seatbelt buckle, the second seatbelt buckle, and then get in. And I could really see John going out for four weeks on alumni white duty, what day when he didn't, you know, twist exactly the right way. So the door's fixed, he can actually get in on the driver's side.
Just picture.
So, anyway, this is, uh, this, this is the notice of that, it'll be on next week's, uh, check register. And then the question is, there's two ways we can do this. We can have Avery do it the same way that Waggly did it, and we take it there on a full safety inspection, everything else, and we lose the truck for four days because it's not, it's not how much it cost to change it all. And they, they do the full analysis. Are we utilize the, uh, the quote from, from Waggly? And, uh, block it out and have them quote directly, which is no, no particular effort on the part. So, but again, we then are putting ourselves in a position to owe to Waggly two hundred bucks.
Well, I, uh, I've had work done at Waggly, and I've had very good luck at Waggly. They're very sincere, I think they're honest. I would make the motion that, if they're open to a motion, that we get this done at Waggly's, and go ahead and get it done.
Could I say something first?
No, ma'am, no. You can in a moment. Okay.
Are you open for a motion, or is that?
Yeah, well, you just made a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, so Lee Hutter made a motion to go ahead and get the truck fixed at Waggly, and Davy has seconded it. Okay, now this time, we're just gonna do this town hall format, so now you can speak.
So basically, what we're saying is, if Avery can do the same job for five hundred dollars left, less, we're just gonna go with Waggly because that's who we've always gone with, and we're not gonna try to save any money.
Well, I-
That's not what I heard, by the way. What I heard is we got a two hundred and ten dollar bill hanging out.
Why do you have a two hundred and ten dollar bill?
Excuse me, can I just speak without interrupting?
I was just asking.
I understand. And, and this is just my understanding of this as well. Uh, we owe them some money 'cause they did some work. Okay, two hundred bucks, plus a, a door, right?
Yeah.
And, uh, so, we would have to at least get a two hundred dollar saving from Avery label and lose the truck for four days, I'm hearing.
And/or.
And/or.
Or to lose, yeah.
And my personal opinion is, is if we don't ever go to pay for it, we'll never learn.
Yeah.
Somewhere along the line, we gotta pay the piper to learn something. And, and, you know, the, the bad part is the truck's gone for four days. You know, maybe John could go on another vacation.
Well, we have to pay the diagnostic that's already been done.
Yeah, of, of course, I understand that. I, I'm not, not suggesting the cheapest way to proceed, I'm suggesting a learning way to proceed.
Diagnostic, Avery's just, here's these paper quote on it. Okay?
But don't we have to pay this regardless, the two ten?
If Waggly gets the contract, they forgive that sort of stuff.
If Waggly doesn't get the contract, then we have to pay.
We, yeah, we are on to the point.
Right, that's what I was trying to get clear, so, uh... But we still think, in my opinion, we still could learn much of these audible people, at least the best points.
And, correct me here, if you're just going to give this to Avery to quote off of Waggly's diagnosis-
Yeah.
Then why would we need to lose the truck for four days?
We don't. It's either or. Pay two hundred and ten bucks and use the, the, uh, Waggly, uh, analysis, okay?
Unless we go with Waggly. Then we don't owe them the two hundred and ten.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have two choices, Waggly or Avery.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Waggly has done the diagnostic.
Yes.
If Avery works off of this quote-
Uh-huh.
Then we don't owe them two hundred and ten dollars.
We don't owe, oh, yes, that's right. And if Avery works off the quote to give us a quote, then we don't owe them any diagnostic charges.
Right. So, if Avery comes in at least two hundred and ten dollars lower than Waggly, because then they'll have to pay Waggly two hundred and ten dollars. So they would have to be at least two hundred and ten dollars less than Waggly, and then it would be the same amount of money that we're paying.
Now, from the standpoint of how things are done, when you have used a vendor in the past, it is not required, you know, if it's been a, a vendor that you've used over and over, you can continue to use it. It's not, it's not something the auditor is gonna get all bent out of shape over. Now, because then, uh, if we want to do that, then we can go up for a formal bid or something, or we can go out for a form of something or another. But the, uh, but again, you know, their analysis may be different. They may, they may find more things, they may find less things, in their opinion.
John has, uh...
No, I, I, I just have a statement. I, I get frustrated, so I have to voice my frustrations. I don't care where you go, but I don't wanna have to do this every time something goes wrong and it needs to be fixed with a pickup. Pick a place for me to take the rig, and it's, that way I have a place to take it. I mean, you know, this, it, it just seems like every time something goes wrong, you gotta go here, you gotta go there. I was gone for over two weeks, my pickup sat in Sulten for two weeks. All the tools that you need are in the back of my pickup, 'cause it's, uh, you can't put them in just ten. What happens if you get a main break or something and all your stuff's there? You're out more than what you are, two hundred dollars.
Okay, let me make a suggestion. Let's do it this way. Let's, let's get Bob and John here, uh, I think we can match both of those. Let's do it this way. Uh, Lee's made a motion to go ahead and get the job done. This will be petered out, I mean, 'cause we're not gonna do everything at once, because John can't afford to lose the truck for any length of time, that's the real headache. Then we'll take, also take the Waggly thing and mark out the prices and give it to Avery and have them quote it, 'cause it's no effort, touching on their data here. And then we will compare what they did versus the, and the next time we do this, we will have a basis of making an ultimate decision. But driving the pickup around and leaving it for quotes here, and John is very disruptive, uh, to it. And then we'll see what, what they do, you know, it, this, this is pretty much basic parts price and hourly labor rate, and then you stick it in the computer and it calculates it. So, is, is that a, is that sufficient?
So, does, uh, so we have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
To, to go ahead and get work in on the pickup, basically.
And we have, we don't have a motion on the floor to send this thing over to Avery?
You don't need a motion for that.
Okay.
I mean, that, that's easy enough to do. So, Lee Hutter's made a motion to go ahead and go with Waggly and, and get it started and get it done. And Davy has seconded it, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. And here, thank you for this, I'm sorry that, you know, we got ahead like this, and we will get a quote from Avery, and we will see what it is. Because the ranger also needs to work according to, uh, Richard. I'm not sure how much it needs, but nonetheless, I, I, the objective here is go ahead and get all the equipment. We've got a lot of things that we have brought up this, the, this year. Uh, the reservoir, the mower, uh, all the trucks. Last year we got tires, we got the, the one-ton fix, that was a real serious problem. We're getting the reservoir road fixed so that, you know, you don't go bouncing off, uh, like I said, I drove it one time, and might escape, and I will not go the second time, and might escape. Uh, so, uh, there's a lot of things that we need to do that's just been sitting here for years.
How's Kevin?
Yeah.
Well, one of the things I like about the path we're on is that I heard John made a very simple request of us to have a place to go to. And maybe that's what we can resolve, huh?
Yeah.
Well, I think we need to have a, not tonight, but later on, we need to have a discussion on, on any of the maintenance vehicles, the vehicles that need maintenance. Uh, John or Richard, somebody needs to be able to take those to someplace and get them fixed without having to bring it to the council.
We, we have money in the budget for that, and was it because what we're using this money for? We're using it under the 301 fund, so the 301 fund is a special fund, requires special approval by the council.
Yeah, okay, good.
And, and if we had enough money in the budget to do the repairs, we could have some of the buy-in out of there. Uh, we could have just done that. Okay, next, minutes. Is that here, behind it? I'm gonna pull the minutes up from August the twentieth. Uh, you've had plenty of those. They're... Davy has, I've looked at it, and Denise has looked at it, and Davy has looked at it, now no corrections. Has anyone else found a correction, or have they done any? Lee?
No, underpinned.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda written.
All seconds, that one.
Do you mind, Lee makes?
I'll make a motion that we approve, yeah.
Okay, and you seconded?
Yes.
Yeah, I ran it.
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, now we're back to the next, uh, citizen comments. If there's a little citizen comment, I will do an update from Gun Road. I called, uh, the, the city engineer at Gun Road to ask him about, uh, get, get me a contact that I can, uh, get the road ground. You know, 'cause that's what, the, the only thing that we think we have an option on is to get it, uh, ground in, in, in Gun Road. Uh, I sent a letter to the property owner of the property. Let me show you why it turned out that- that, I thought you were gonna make a comment if I would say it earlier. If I can find it. Oh, it's down here. This one is a little weirder than the most. Here we go. Oh, nuts.
Moving yours?
I, no, this is Homage County. It didn't, it didn't like me moving that. Now it's gone away. Uh, anyway, what, what happened, I thought I was trying to show, was that, uh... Here, well, anyway, if you take a look, uh, I'm sorry about that.
Move map over there on the left.
Was that?
Move map on the left, is that what you wanna do?
No, it's gotten distorted. I decided to give me a pseudo three D. Anyway, this first piece of property here, uh, on corner of Gun and Dorment. Uh, the property goes across the road. The road is within the property. Now, that's not true of the rest of it because they're, uh, the property line stops at the road right of way. So, I sent a letter off to the owner saying, hey, uh, we need to do some work in your land. Uh, uh, what's the easement stuff? And now John's gotta go try to dig out. I don't see what records that we have on that, see what the easement is. Uh, I'm gonna have, have not heard back from her. Now I can send her another letter and, uh, be more specific. So, hey, we're gonna do this unless you say otherwise for some reason. I don't think she will say otherwise.
Where does she live?
Uh, Arizona. So, so, anyway, so, uh, we're gonna work on that and, uh, and I've just, uh, got in contact to, uh, with a mower that can mow the, mow the, uh, blackberries down. And that way, instead of running, with the front end, with the backhoe, it's washing them, uh, we'll get it cut down one type. And I'm gonna talk to the person, see if it's really true and if the cost is gonna be, uh, small compared to anything else. And as soon as I get all this stuff together, we will, we will do the tree. The trees are a different issue. I drove the road. I didn't see them to be a catastrophic issue at all. Hit the blackberries down and take another look. So, that's it. So, having nothing left to say, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.